Okay, we're gonna call to order the meeting October 10th, City Council Workshop. You have an agenda in front of you. Mr. Tindall?
First...
Let's do, the police chief has an action item for council to approve so that we can meet deadlines for a grant, so I'll have Chief Bowen give us a little presentation real quick.
All right, good afternoon. On October 1st, the city was awarded $61,297 for the JAG grant. Of that grant total, $30,649 would be used for the purchase of tasers for city officers. The remaining balance would go to the county to purchase items. It's my recommendation that we accept the funding.
Have a motion?
Motion.
Before we get there, Chief, do you know anything about Eddie Byron or Edward Byron?
No.
Edward Byron?
The ward's named after him.
Google real quick.
Well, I'll tell you because I've already researched it and I think it's important that we know.
Okay.
He was born in 1966 in New York City. Three brothers, mother and father, of course. Grew up in the city, wanted to be a police officer his entire life. In 1986, he was 20 years old, he got hired with the Metro Transit Authority in New York as a security guard. The following year, in 1987, he got on with the New York City Police Department, became an officer in blue. And so, he was, he had made his life's goal. In 1988, February the 26th, he was given the job of protecting some people who were disclosing information on drug deals that were going down in New York City. And so, he was basically just serving outside somebody's house, protecting their house. There was a kingpin who was a drug lord in New York who wanted to make sure that the people who were turning evidence against him shut up. So, basically, he took a hit out on any police officer that was seen close to that area. So, on February the 26th, he was ambushed. He had two people approach his car, one of them came up to the passenger side and knocked on the window. The other person went to the driver's side door, fired five shots into the back of Eddie, and he died on the scene. And so, from that point forward, they established a memorial award, and that's where this award comes from, in his honor. So, I think it's important that we remember that, so thank you. And with that, I'll make the motion over.
Sir, motion is second. Ms. Wright will call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Leland?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Way?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. All right, we'll move in. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Mayor, if we could, she's not back yet, Angela, oh, you're here? She had, they're in the middle of interviews, and she has to go to do interviews, so if we could skip real quick to other business and talk about McKnight Park property conversion item under other business, it would be helpful to her schedule. And the hiring of our new director of golf, which we don't want to delay.
So, the information before you is in regards to a conversion of a small piece of property at McKnight Park, McKnight Park, home to Sportscom, Miracle Fields, Starplex, and the Fourfield Complex. It was purchased by the City of Murfreesboro in 1970, partially through federal grant funds. Since that time, the Parks and Rec Department and the City of Murfreesboro have accepted several other grant appropriations that resulted in what is called a NLU, a Notice of Limitation of Use being placed on the property. Basically, what that does is to protect that property for use only as public recreation. The grant funding was through land and water conservation funds. The process that we refer to as the 6F conversion requires that real property that has been acquired or assisted with LWCF monies that is converted to other than public outdoor recreation use must be replaced regardless of the area of size, regardless of the size of the areas to be converted. It ensures that the permanency of the recreation estate and state and local recreation sites assisted under LWCF by guaranteeing that any conversion of land from the National Recreation Estate be replaced with land of equal market value and equivalent recreational usefulness and location. In 2014, the City of Murfreesboro began the process for conversion of a small seven-acre portion of McKnight Park. It is attachment one, if you can see on your copy there, that was identified as surplus property. The parcel is located between the airport expansion and the commercial development that is there next to Walmart, Chick-fil-A, and the wine cellar now. The plan was approved at that time by the Murfreesboro Parks and Recreation Commission, the Murfreesboro Planning Commission, the Murfreesboro City Council, with public hearings held at the Planning Commission and at the City Council levels. So, the federal process for those small conversions was actually updated in 2017, and that allows for a partial conversion of the property without requiring the compliance of the full conversion process, which is an opportunity for us now to move forward with that project. To qualify, the replacement area must be contiguous with the current site or another existing parks and recreation area, and otherwise meet all of the eligibility requirements. In the case of McKnight Park, there is no suitable property that is contiguous to the current site. However, we did a comprehensive study of the entire park system, and a potentially suitable compliance site was identified next to Barfield Crescent Park. It's attachment two, it's a property on the south side of Barfield Crescent Park. Wanted to note to this group that the property intended, that neither of the properties that are intended for future park development in the Blackman area meet those eligibility requirements as a part of this process. The city is working in cooperation with Griggs and Maloney to assist in the environmental services in completing the conversion application in the process, which is administered through the Recreation Education Services of TDEC. We have done a site visit with an RES consultant and are looking at upcoming steps that will include appraisals, environmental review, public hearings, and additional visits to you for our council approval to make a conversion proposal to be submitted to a grant compliance review committee. With their approval then, the proposal is sent to the National Park Service for additional review and approval, and only after that approval is made can the property be sold or purchased. Staff seeks direction from the council now to pursue that application to TDEC and the National Park Service to allow for the acquisition of the property contiguous to Barfield Crescent Park, and looking for direction for us to negotiate an option to purchase that replacement property at the appropriate time in the application process for approval by council. So, it's anticipated that there'll be no direct fiscal impact from this conversion. As required in the conversion, proceeds from the converted property are directly invested into the purchase of the additional property. In this case, we're looking at converting about seven acres at McKnight Park to probably more than 70 on the backside of Barfield Crescent Park, adding to that land that is a part of Barfield Crescent Park. An option that I'm really excited about, I think that that park has many, many opportunities for environmental education, conservation, public recreation, and a lot of ways could be a real asset to the park system as a whole. Welcome, any questions?
Is the property taking half of that parking lot?
It is. So, when you look at, and let me pass around the... Is that a better copy? I get it black and white and referred to colors in my last minute efforts here this morning. So, it is. What you'll see is a part of that total master plan of that backside there with the airport expansion, what is showing on those maps are the fields that have been dedicated for airport use for some time, that will soon be used for airport use as a part of that process. There is a small section where we're looking to build a maintenance shed just on the backside of Starplex there, and so, the exact lines of that, that's definitely an approximate look. Our next steps, as we begin, surveys, appraisals, all of that, we will look at drawing those lines in very strategic ways. Those are...
The problem I see is that that parking lot during spring fling and during game times when Starplex is used in the summertime is...
Premium, yes.
Yeah, it's premium.
Yes, sir.
And there's not really, you know, you're having to park in the grass on the other side of Starplex now to get enough people, because that other parking lot for Starplex is full, and so, people are having to park on grass behind Field 5 there.
Yes.
Is there a plan for additional parking for Starplex?
There is. It's a part of that master plan and really looking to approach that more strategically, something that needs to be looked at. The comprehensive part of that master plan, when you look at what we've done with the development of the Miracle Field and how that has improved not just that park, but the community as a whole, in my opinion, and what that looks like for strategic parking, for how we are utilizing that space, the changes that we are facing now to that space because of our growth and the opportunities available to us from other directions is also part of that process, yes, sir. The specifics of what that looks like now with some of the development that is coming through there currently, just in terms of utilities and access, and what happens in that space will also be part of the study. I think the intention now is not to draw those hard lines of the specific use, it is to get some direction from you on the overall concept. So, the properties that, the part of the process that we began in 2014 and addressed and how it affected McKnight Park were before the Miracle Field, so obviously, we need to look at updating that master plan and looking at the specifics of it. The thing that we need, I think, from this group moving forward is to really address what the replacement property looks like. We cannot move forward with one side until we've identified how to move forward on the other as part of the conversion.
Well, there's a couple of things to consider.
Yes, sir.
It's timing, because, you know, when you're, you have programs that operate out of there that, you know, you don't want to put any more burden on them than you want to, but access to another way out of that complex is extremely important, too. I know at one time, we talked about either closing access on one end of that, and I remember a bad storm that came through there one time, and we had to get everybody out, and for some reason, I'm not sure why, we couldn't go out the airport direction, we had to get everybody out onto Johnit Lane, and it was madhouse. So, it can be, I just say, you know, when we're planning this, and if there's any implementation, there's two things, dual access to that property, two ways to get in and out of it, and then adequate parking, if we're gonna do it. I really, really think we're gonna have to make sure, and the timing of putting that in place so that we don't put a burden on the people that are all, that are using that facility.
Absolutely, very good points. I think to speak to the timing of this process, we began in 2014, the conversion that brings us through the state and federal levels of approval is, if you're worrying about it being too quick, I would rest assured...
Be slow.
That is not primary concern, but how to move forward strategically and make sure we don't do something that cannot switch back in that piece, I think is absolutely part of this process now, looking how that park is best serving our current facilities and then the future opportunities for growth, good access, good parking, how it interacts with the airport development there on that backside, and then the commercial development. When you look at that property, there is a piece across the backside, and then you'll see a little finger that comes out to Memorial. That site has actually never been used for parkland. It's had a residential area, had a little carport on it there for a while, I think, where the lines were fuzzy perhaps as a part of that process, but when you look at effectively using land, commercial development, and balancing that with the opportunities that this conversion brings us for the park system and meeting all of our goals, when you look at the opportunity to say, "We can take this seven acres, and we can purchase 73 acres and focus on preservation, on conservation, on environmental education, on increasing the capacity of what's currently successful at Barfield Crescent Park," and adding to those opportunities, it is a really terrific opportunity for us.
Is it seven acres?
Give or take. I think that plus and minus piece of this is at the very beginning. We have, when the original property, when we began the process, the area is identified as surplus, and the lines were drawn, we have discussed different pieces, the further development and plans for the airport themselves, for the maintenance shed, for how the utilities connect, I think that will continue to be finalized as a part of the planning piece. To begin conversion, we don't have to have all of those answers in place.
So, basically, though, isn't it just kind of the ball, the soccer field plus a little bit of the parking lot, but the soccer field doesn't have any, there's no irrigation on that field or anything like that, right?
Correct. It is across the street from the one that's current, not across the street, across the way from the one that's currently lighted out there.
Yeah, so is it, it doesn't seem like it would be seven acres. I mean, does it go back towards Memorial, too? Is that...
There is a finger that does connect to Memorial. When you look at the entire shape, it is there of what you probably know as Field 8, and then a connector piece of property that connects to Memorial.
So, it's just that field, though? Is this, this isn't getting, this isn't selling off any of the other fields at this point, or it is?
Correct, but keep in mind that the other fields are already a part of the airport plans.
Yeah, yeah.
So, the goals for youth sport development will be taking place in other areas. Obviously, Starplex stays, but the multipurpose spaces that we were, that we have used for years, you know, have been tagged for airport expansion. We were fortunate enough to use them all of this time, but I believe that that is nearing the end of our, of our opportunity to do so.
You know, just personally, I would tell you, I, you know, I like, I think this is a good idea, and that field is not used for games or anything like that because it's pretty rough.
It is.
The parking lot issue, I think, is a real issue, but, you know, I'm not sure, I just, I'm not sure I remember us talking about getting rid of all that, all that field space out there for the airport. I hate to say that, but I just, I mean, I know it's been talked about. I don't remember ever that, did we...
I know this conversation's been going on for quite some time. It was actually before your time that we initiated this conversation.
I got you, okay. All right.
It has, when you look at, when the current expansion is complete, when you look at the process now and what we're trying to get in front of, that field will be the only part remaining as a part of this, a part of this piece. It will be completely encircled by Walmart, Chick-fil-A, future commercial development, the wine cellar in that piece. When you look at what's best for park space and how to utilize that, I know that youth athletics and parking are very, very important to us, but the, the opportunity for conversion of this in terms of what's gonna be best for the park system as a whole, it's certainly my recommendation to you to move forward. And then also, we'll continue to work on identifying how to do it very specifically, and...
Are there any wetlands on the 73 acres?
On the 73 acres, we have not studied at all. I can tell you that the west fork of the Stone River, Stones River, extends along the backside, that'll be part of this process. There's a farm pond. It is beautiful, beautiful property, huge trees, river space, a lot of my favorite type of park.
We can't say we saved the wetland stuff?
There are riparian areas that are environmentally important for sure on this property, yes, sir.
Good, excellent.
Yes.
You need a motion?
Well, wait just a second, one more question, ma'am. When you talk about conversion, you're just basically saying we're gonna sell this property.
Swapsees, yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make, a lot of times, people don't understand, when you say a conversion, the public hears that word, and they don't, they don't know what you're really saying.
We will sell one property, we will purchase another, but it will be a very monitored process.
Because of the restrictions that were on the purchase of this, or the use of this property, to allow this to be sold, we have to purchase other property that is, that will convert to that same usage or, and be appropriate in that same usage, so that's basically what we're saying.
Yes, a very specific process.
To be able to sell this, we have to be able to, I mean, to be able to buy the other property, or sell this, we have to buy the property.
Yes, it has to be equal or greater acreage value, recreational value, and the process to doing that is a, it's an intense process. That's why I'm anxious to get started with it, because it will, it will be a series of things that we go through and do.
The only thing I just, I want to make my point one more time.
Yes, sir.
Is the right of way, the access through this, you know, selling it is one thing, but yielding right of way to that access, if we don't have another access way from the back of that property, I think we're gonna be creating a problem.
Yes, it is not the intention to close access. I think when, when we look at what is available now, this is not included in that, in that piece.
And there might be a better way to access Memorial Boulevard than what we presently do. That road coming back in front of the airport might, there might be another way of doing that.
Correct.
That's only, yes.
Let me jump in just real quick. The developers of the Chick-fil-A and that property right there have built a back access road that runs from, was that, from the Walmart, the stoplight at the back of Walmart. That access road is gonna be extended onto the park prob, the remaining park property, and it will be a public access road, probably as an alley, may or may not make full road configuration, but it will be available to the public, and it'll probably be gated much of the time, but certainly available as emergency access and back access when it's needed. So, it'll be a better access than we had before, which wandered up basically to the airport and around.
I just, I just say, don't limit it as far as the size of it.
Right.
Because there are times when you've got to empty that field pretty quick, and if, you know, the issue is, if it's a small access, you've created a bottleneck for people to get through anyway. So, if you have the chance or the opportunity in the beginning to make it a fully accessed way, I don't know whether gating is the issue or not, but I would, I'm just concerned that we don't restrict the access to that property or the regress, if you want to talk about that, the regress of that property when there's a bunch of youngins out there on the field and a big storm coming in.
In terms of exiting the park, it'll be a better access way than we had before, which went up basically to the airport property and back. It'll be better than that. Will it be perfect? I'm not sure, but it'll, it'll be, it will be an access, and it'll be better than what we had before for the park.
And Bill's point is a good one. I mean, probably the worst-case scenario is the Fourth of July when we have the fireworks out there, because both accesses are used as entrances and exits as well, and, but looking at the road that goes across behind Chick-fil-A, it's currently a two-lane road that's better than the roadway that's on the other side, so I think it'll be an improvement once we get that roadway completed, as Mr. Ives had stated. Angela, the finger that comes off the property next to Arby's up there, the property that runs between that finger and Chick-fil-A, do we own that property as well? Is that our property, or is that somebody else's property?
We own the single finger. If, it is now between Chick-fil-A and, someone help me out, the, is that right? There is, there is one, one finger.
Okay.
That is shown on that map, if you can, if you can see it.
Right.
And that is it, correct.
But, but the remaining property between that finger and Chick-fil-A, we do not own, the city does not, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Because it's, it's, it's pretty rough looking...
It is.
As far as the way it's maintained and everything, so...
I think it's on the other side.
If it was, it's right there between Chick-fil-A and Arby's. When you look out at Chick-fil-A, it's that lot there in front of it.
Okay, yeah.
But, it, I was gonna say, if it was ours, we needed to clean it up, but if it's not ours, I don't guess there's much, well, there's something we can do about it, but we may need to bring that to somebody's attention.
All right, you need a motion?
I've got a question, too. You said the properties are equal or greater value, are we saying, and you didn't say this, but this is just me, are we saying that this seven-acre parcel is commensurate from a value standpoint to the larger parcel?
Yes.
Okay.
And that will be a requirement of the grant conversion piece, is that it is equal or greater. And so, that's what, what we'll begin now, is identifying that and making sure that they are matched up appropriately.
When you say equally greater, Ms. Jackson, are we thinking they're pretty close to equal value?
Yeah.
I mean, we're not gonna wind up with a huge bill on the backside saying, "We didn't get enough of our property to pay for the remainder of this park, so therefore, we're gonna have to throw in another $2 million or something."
That is not the intention, no, sir. I think that if anything, we will find ourselves on the other side of that, really looking at, at the increased opportunities for the city.
Yeah, as far as best use for this property and its value of this property, there's no question that changing this amount of land for 10 times the amount of land is not a good move.
Yes.
And I think that, I think it's a very positive move for Parks and Recreation Department as well.
What's the time, I mean, I know you don't know the timeframe, but if you had to give somebody the best guess, ideas to what timeframe it was?
This has been going on for five or six years, five years now? So, maybe in the next 10, you know...
I hesitate to put something to it because there are so many different factors of that federal piece. It would be my goal to be complete within a year.
Bet you lunch. Fair, okay. All right. I just keep everybody in the loop, as, you know, the impacted groups, and make sure you keep everybody in the loop as to what expectations are so that nobody doesn't get a surprise that all of a sudden, there's ground being turned and parking lots gone, and we're trying to figure out how to park, get people.
Yes, sir, I think that's, I think that's very important. I think that the things that will impact, that will affect those groups will not, will happen before this conversion process affects the groups.
Great.
Move for approval.
Second?
Motion is second. Ms. Wright will please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Leland?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Way?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye. Mr. Tindall?
Yes, sir, we wanted to give the council update on the, our work on the pay plan. You recalled during the budget process that council gave direction and funds to do some work on our city pay plan, which is presenting us with quite a bit of difficulties. I want to recognize those who really worked hard on it, Pam Russell, Jennifer before she left, Jennifer Moody, and Jim Crumley, did he, where is he? He's hiding out. Mr. Crumley is, I will say, since I mentioned his name, this is his last meeting, tomorrow is his retirement date, so great thanks to him, and then Darren Gore, who really drove, drove us home in putting together the technical aspects of our plan. Yeah, you've received some copies of it, so you can see it, I just wanted to give you some overviews on how it's structured, some of the objectives that we had when we put together our plan. I think our primary objective, particularly in today's employment marketplace, is to make sure that we're market-driven, and that our plan has the agility to adjust to the market as we work hard to retain our employees and also to hire new employees. So, if you're not in the market, you're not gonna be successful at either one of those, so as we put our plan together, that was one of our primary objectives. We, in structuring the plan, kind of identified three different groups for reasons I'll talk to you about. Public safety was the first one, we did public safety early on and put that plan into place right after the first of the budget year, so public safety has been on their pay, their new step plan for a couple of months now, a few months now. One thing we've talked about is to take the command staff, both in police and fire, and move them to open ranges, and the purpose of that is to start moving us towards performance evaluations, particularly at the management level, and their command staff is really managers at this point when they, when they reach that, that level, so we wanted to move them over to the open range. The other difficulty we have is we don't want to become a training ground for other organizations in bringing employees in, particularly in the non-exempt positions in the first five years, training them up and then having them leave to go and get a few dollars more somewhere else is something we wanted to avoid, so we created a step program that is really designed to hold on to those employees, make sure that they progress over those five years to the, to what we've identified as a market range, midpoint of that range, and then after that, move into an open range and allow council to make adjustments to their pay from that point on, and then exempt employees, all the other ones, would be in open range. We're talking about general fund employees now and water resource employees, but they would all be in, the exempt employees would be in open range as well as non-exempt, created in five years. What it does also is allows council, when they, when we talk about the budget, budget time, to take a look at those different areas and see if they wanted to segment out the increases, if that's a desire, it's been discussed in the past, and so now we have a stra... if that's a desire. It's been discussed in the past. And so now we have a structure that, that really would allow council to do that. For implementation, we were within budget. We're within the number that council has provided to us. We have some other budget, or some other adjustments that we'll bring back to council's budget adjustments that will utilize some of the funds that were, that remain after, after we put the plan into place. It does leave us some margins for adjustments as we go. Now, the complexity of this requires at some point in time that we drive a stake in the ground and stop taking information from what the department has wanted to do to make sure that their department is structured, to get that, so we can put it into the computer system and get it implemented. And then we understand that it's a moving train, so we'll catch that train up probably after the first year. So we wanted to maintain some margin in the budgeted amount to be able to do that. We also wanted to build, as I said, budget flexibility. So when we come to annual appropriations, you really have three different buckets that you can look at. The public safety step plans, and because of the way the step plan is structured, we can take a look at what the general economy is doing and look at COLA and if that needs to be adjusted, in addition to the regular step plan that they would follow in the first five years. And then the open range employees. The methodology we used, we, of course, talked quite a bit with the departments over several months, and took a lot of their suggestions, but not all of them. We couldn't address all of them. And I think that's a normal course and as we go forward in the future, even though we have a plan that we wanted to make as adjustable as possible, we, we understand, and I think most of the department heads understand, that we, we won't be able to accommodate every, every request that they, they would, they would want to, to make within their department. We, we did, however, when we made adjustments, we looked at it as objectively as possible. We weren't adjusting people. We were adjusting positions and where they fell within the marketplace. We did reiterations back to the departments a couple of different times to get other additional inputs as we developed the, the plan. And again, we'll continue to review and approve some changes. As far as correcting the, there were some anomalies that were created by the former pay plan. You can identify those to, to a certain extent when you start to do an array of, of the employment, to give you some idea of, of how, how that worked and the complexity it's involved. And this looks very engineering-like because it was developed by an engineering mind, which was not mine. But this is an array of, of employees for one of the pay grades over years of service. And you can see that the dots are a bit all over the place. However, there is a regression line that runs through the middle of that. And there's a range, which is the dotted line in there, that we wanted to make sure that people got into. So as we identified those that fell below that regression line, because we weren't taking funds away from anyone that had it already above the regression line, but those below, and we took those and shifted them up to make sure that they fell within the regression, within the, the range that we had set for them. So we did that for each of the pay plans and identified specific amounts that we then fed back in to make sure that we were within budget at all, all times as we went through, through the process. I did it again. I'm so proud of that. It's just so well done. What we have left to do, right now, we're taking care of part-time positions under allocations or appropriations given to the department to, to pay the part, part-time. We'll take a look at those salaries and make sure that we're able to handle those as efficiently as we possibly can. Job descriptions, we have worked very hard to eliminate some of the dupli, duplicative job descriptions that were created over time. I think we had 200 and, where's Pam? 243.
243.
243 job descriptions on a full-time employment base of 900. And so if you do the math, there's, some of these job descriptions had one person, two people in them. We wanted to combine those to make, to make it a lot easier, certainly on the pay plan itself, to, to see those, but just to make sense from an organizational standpoint, to really put people that were doing the same types of jobs in the same group, group of jobs. But in order to do that, because there is some complexity to that, and there's some legal complexity to writing job descriptions and, and such, what we would ask for is, and funding for consultants to assist us with that. And Pam will have more information on that. We'll bring it forward to you in a, in the next meeting to talk about what the consultants would do. But it is one of the things that we're going to need to do. We just, I would tell you, it's very difficult, and we ate up a lot of people's time. It was an extreme, extremely difficult effort to handle a pay plan in-house. I think we've accomplished it very well, but you get to a point where we just, we, we will need outside assistance to be able to, to get over the, all the, all the intricacies of, of a pay plan for an organization our side, our size. In the future, we'll do market reviews on a consistent basis and a three-year comprehensive review of our pay plan to make sure that we're staying within the market and things aren't off balance as we go forward. One of the things we want to do is to look for technical, professional positions and make sure that as we hire them, if we hire them, and they're bringing in a lot of good experience, that we put them in the appropriate pay level, so that we're not just locking people into one bottom-line salary range that really locks us out of the market for people that have good experience that we can bring into the organization. And as I said before, what we want to work for is performance reviews. And certainly at the management level, we want to start performance reviews. And whether that's tied to pay or not, we'll have further discussions.
May I?
So if you, you can ask all the questions you want.
Okay. Can you put that one back up?
That one?
For the future, and I'd like to ask for immediate future, if you would take a real, real serious look at bringing back one of the part-time couriers, just see with that, how much that would upset the apple cart. I understand it's very much needed. And just look at it and just see, from what I'm seeing and understanding, that we need at least one of those people to come back because of the workload of other people. Can you just take a serious look at it and kind of?
Sure.
Okay.
We can do that.
Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions or comments? Implementation-wise, I'm going to get this wrong, because Pam's already corrected me two or three times. I think around the first of November, or?
I think November 11.
November 11.
And then November 16.
And, yeah, so November 11th for weekly, November 16th for bi-weekly employees is the intent to implement, implement the new pay plan. And I think water resources would be on that same schedule. Yeah. So with that, and no questions.
All of these are within the budget?
It's within the budgeted amount that we were provided.
It is.
And as I said, we have some room to, to do a couple other things and to make some additional adjustments if we need to after the first of the year. We want to give HR time to get the system up to speed and running and do all those things, which has its own degree of complexity. It's pretty intense. Good. Well, thank you. Our, go to our next item, which, why don't we do, because Darren's involved in the golf interviews as well, the golf director interviews, why don't we, if we could, Mayor, take the solid waste?
Just because it's Darren.
Just because it's Darren. He doesn't have a PowerPoint, so.
I could.
Oh.
I'm always prepared with a PowerPoint if you want.
How will you tell many people you carry a?
I keep, I got a flash drive, just for special occasions, for PowerPoints, ad hoc PowerPoints. So, I'm reading this on my phone. I didn't print this out. I'm sorry.
It's good.
So the solid waste department has been endeavoring to become a self-funded department over these last couple of years with the $5 per month per cart residential fee that has yet to be implemented, but we're working on that currently. What I've got in front of you today, I'm not asking for a, your approval at this time. I'm just warming you up to the, the idea of getting a revenue requirement pro forma study done by Jackson Thornton. I've talked with Jackson Thornton. They've done our cost of service studies and our rate revenue requirement pro formas since 2007. Talked with them, asked them what they thought it would cost to come in, look at the history of the expenses with the solid waste department. We know we've got the $5 per month fee that we need to implement. We expect that's going to need to be more as transfer stations, new debt is incurred, operational expenses increase, and obviously when the landfill closes, if we have to haul garbage to Camden, which is 100-plus miles one way, that obviously is a game changer as well. So we want to get ahead of that and do a proactive look into the future of what we think those revenue requirements would be and how that $5 per month fee needs to change year to year to year to anticipate these growing expenses that we're going to incur. So this is just, if you have a fundamental issue with us going out and hiring a consultant, $15,000 is what they've told us they could come in and do this. So I would be bringing the proposal back to you next Thursday, the next council meeting. But as I try to do with our water resources board, before I ask you to make a decision on something maybe that you haven't heard about or thought about yet, this memo is just giving you the, warming you up to the concept. And if you have any fundamental disagreement with the approach, just to get with me and talk to me about it. So this really is just for more informational purposes with a, with a proposal forthcoming at the next council meeting. But we can answer questions.
General budget number on, on solid waste, a yearly budget number, about how much is that typically?
About $5 million.
Five or six million?
Yeah.
So $15,000 on a $5 or $6 million a year component, probably okay.
The other benefit, it will give us a good basis as we go forward and continue to talk regionally about our solid waste management. This, this will provide us some solid groundwork to work from that.
Yeah. I, I sent you, the exhibit I've got in there is some past work that we've done using Jackson Thornton's with the pro forma on the water resources, how we look at a five-year pro forma and then create a five-year rate design, so that, again, you're not going levelized bill and then, or, you know, a, a two-low of a bill and then having a knee-jerk in one year and go extremely high. It really just kind of graduates the bill appropriately. And, and honestly, we need to get out and, and do stakeholder meetings about the solid waste issue and how it's got to get self-funded. And being able to sit down with businessmen and even residents and showing them this picture of, these are the things that are going to happen, and this is why the bill has to increase. It's a very, very strong educational tool. And people, you know, 90, 90% of the people understand, when they see the numbers and they understand you're, you're taking a proactive approach to something, they appreciate it. Obviously, there's a few folks that just never really, they don't really care. They just don't like to see the, the fee.
Do you have any concern without knowing exactly how that issue's going to be resolved with the landfill, the work that will be done today versus, you know, what the ultimate picture may? I know you'll probably need transfer stations regardless, which I guess is one of the underlying assumptions, but just speak to that.
I, I would, well, the way I would like to approach it is to take a very conservative approach on a pro forma and a less conservative approach and have a range. And I probably would be looking at only working with the public on the more conservative approach and that whole concept of under-promise and over-deliver. And hopefully, if, if, if things happen that are less expensive than what we, what we conservatively forecast, then that number comes down and then you look a little bit, look like you're a little bit better than if the number goes up.
And I'll, I was going to say, as though, even though we know we're going to change because we are charging now, does provide us, like Darren said, a good basis to talk to people about why it is we're charging for it. So it does have merit now, even though changes will be coming in the future. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. The only question I had was, have they created pro forma without knowing, how, how, what direction we're going in?
This is for now.
Well, again, I think the most conservative approach is, you, you can take the most conservative approach, is that we know Middle Point's going to close.
Okay.
And that we're going to have to haul garbage 100 miles away. We're going to have to build, build, build two transfer stations for $13 million and then haul it 100 miles away and pay $40 per ton in tipping fees, Joey, something in that, that range, 40 to 50. And we've got the 2035 growth projection, so we'll factor growth in there and how many new carts. And, and then you just, you try to take that very conservative.
Shot in the dark.
It's a shot in the dark, and you, and you hope you, you.
You've got something to work on.
Right. You hope you, you hope you overestimate the fees and.
I got you.
Somewhere along the way, you catch a break and it's not as expensive as you, as you thought it would be.
That's a, that's a known solution, though, right?
It is a known solution.
That's a, that's the one thing that we know is a solution, you know, whether we do some sort of waste energy or some other, some other solution.
Recycling, whatever.
Something that may come up, may come up. And I guess, you know, what I was there thinking is that this would at least give us a good benchmark, that we know, okay, this solution exists. Here's what it's going to cost if this happens. Now, there are all these other things that we might do.
You could.
Benchmark is probably the best way.
Yeah. And then all of a sudden, you look at that and go, okay, well, if it's.
We did better.
$50 a month, $30 a month.
We got to go.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. We could get into infinite, you know, you could get into infinite pro formas, but we'll just try to take the most conservative known path forward.
Yeah.
And use that as the, as the communication tool.
Yeah. If nothing happens and we got to ship it, this is what it's going to look like.
What it's going to look like. Right.
Craig, I, I think something we may want to discuss, and I'm not saying to do this, you know, we've already gone through a budget year, but I was on the phone with a resident on Friday and had a 45-minute conversation about the West Main Center. And, you know, it was closed on Friday because it was full. And, you know, not, a lot of the residents don't understand the agreement that was signed back in the early 80s on how that works, that we don't pick that trash up. But I think it's become increasingly clearer that we don't, you know, we don't have control over that site.
Right.
And we're going to have to try to figure a way, either how much it's going to cost to continue operating that at a, at a level that we don't get complaints on a weekly basis, or doing something else with it. You know, because right now, it may be open two days a week by the time that it gets full as immediately as it, as it opens up. So that may be something to look at.
Well, the recycling, even the, yes, I, I, we can always throw in those kind of operational expenses if what we think, if we want to keep a convenience center open all week long and the manpower and the, and the, and the cost, if we want to start charging people to, to use that facility, as well as, you know, recycling. I'm seeing, I'm seeing recycling more as a, as a market study.
Right.
Moving forward, since we don't really have any operational experience there.
The resident I talked to this morning said that MTSU is not accepting cardboard anymore.
Really?
At their recycle center.
Yeah.
And.
And no glass either?
Yeah, no glass.
So no glass, no cardboard?
There's no recycle market for, that's effective.
And now, we're trying to figure out where recycle, recyclable material goes. But our recyclable, we only have one roll-off that does recyclables. Is that right, Joey?
We have one compactor, we have a open top or closed top, and a last one for newspaper paper. We have six, eight yards of plastic.
So just the compactor is for cardboard?
The compactor, or.
But how long would it take that to fill up?
Just, it's going to be broken down. It's going to take about two days, or depends on how many people are bringing in all Amazon boxes. We're starting to use it now here.
Yeah. And it's very, it's not really a time. The only thing, I'm making a point that, you know, we, there's things that we have control over that we can fix, but that West Main facility, we don't have control over how that is picked up. But we're.
I, I, we really do, and I think City Manager's made it clear that he wants a very strong stakeholder outreach campaign before we start billing this fee. So I think any talking points that we want to create to get in front of as many people as we can, and if West Main Convenience Center's one of those, we want to communicate to the, to the public. This is the opportunity to, to educate and tell them what we do and what we don't have control over, and that that landfill is going to close and it's going to impact them. It's not just going to impact city residents, the people in the county and the folks that are having private providers serve them now. Those private providers are not going to have Middle Point available to them either. They're going to have to go out farther and their, their fees are going to go up. So when people see kind of this pro forma that we're going to develop, those private providers are going to have, have something real similar.
There's just a perception out there that the city's cutting back services on trash pickup, and that's just not the case. It's just that, you know, for five years now, we've all been saying it's not a matter of if it's going to happen, it's a matter of when it's happening and. of if it's going to happen, it's a matter of when it's happening and we're at the win.
Right.
Now that it's happening and it's good to be able to educate and let people know that is changing in the community and it's going to be something that's changed moving forward.
Mr. Brownie is on it. He's been in our, we've got, we will have a public outreach campaign, if you want to call it that, ready to roll.
Do we need a motion on this?
No, this is information. We'll bring the contract back, probably next council meeting or the one after that.
I tell you, I'm going to build on a little bit of what Shane said just before, since we're talking about it and, you know, just, I think, maybe put this a little more bluntly is that, you know, eventually, now, six months from now, a year from now, whatever, and we had a really good discussion, I think, about the Main Street facility during the budget time and really, I think we came up with a pretty awesome Band-Aid solution, whatever you want to call it, because really, we didn't give up a whole lot of hours when it really boiled down to it. But, you know, if we're having to close down now on the four days a week that we're open, if we're still having to close down early on all of those days that, you know, if we're only really being open 12, 13, 14 hours a week, you know, I'd just say, maybe we need to look for an alternative and use that piece of property for something different, find another piece of property that we can do something else with, charge people to recycle. I told you all, I think in a meeting recently, you know, I took a TV monitor, computer monitor over there at Haley Road, I had to hand them a $10 bill when I gave it to them and they took it, you know, and that's, that's the way it is. It's not free for them to do, to deal with it, it's not free to me for them to deal with it, right? That's a county deal, I pay county taxes, but that's what happens. Same thing with glass and cardboard and all this stuff that people think, you know, we're shipping to China and selling it for a million bucks, that ain't happening, you know? So, if you're going to bring in a big old load of glass, that's fine, you just got to pay for it, you know? I mean, so, we got to find an alternative solution. I don't know when that's on y'all's board, but when we're educating, I just don't think it's appropriate for us to have a facility that's sitting there open 12, 15 hours a week or, you know, however, whatever it is, 20 hours a week by the time everything's said and done.
Yeah.
And then just getting complaints about it all the time because it's not efficient. Let's do something that's efficient or not do it.
Charge for it, well, and we.
That's my opinion on it.
Well, the discussion, the discussion is going to be broached too about charging for mulch, or limb and branches disposal and whatnot and having people come in at the Florence Road facility and maybe paying on a per-ton basis on what they dump out there too.
As a council, you know, there are things that are good that we get to talk about and there are things that are not as good and unfortunately, we're in the seats when the landfill's going to get to close down and, you know, we didn't ask for it to close, but it's where we are. I mean, you're going to be talking about leach aid that you're going to have to talk about with Middle Point coming and us processing leach aid in the water, the water and wastewater facility. So, there's a lot of things that are, that are going to change and we don't really have an option.
I'm excited about it.
Yep. All right, thank you, Mr. Gore.
Thank you.
Let's move to downtown development update. Mr. Whitaker. Thank you, Darren. Hey, if you need to go, you're good.
Darren, can I have a PowerPoint? A couple of weeks ago, we had a meeting with Murphysboro Investment Group, it was a good meeting. We, I think, have, and I'm going to look to Adam, the final draft of the contract between Murphysboro Investment Group and the city.
We received what I hope is the final set of revisions yesterday evening. I'm going to look through them and look through the entire documents again, but I don't anticipate there being any significant changes, probably just if there's any typo or kind of minor editorial changes, but I think we're substantively, I think we're, we have an agreement.
And if Mr. Tucker.
If I could, while we're talking about agreements real quick, because you'll get them when we do get the final draft so that you know what you're looking at, we'll have, there's really three sets of primary agreements to this, there'll be other agreements that'll follow in, but you'll get a purchase and sale agreement, that's just for exchange of the land, that's pretty straightforward, but you'll get a development agreement that lays out the responsibilities that the developer will have and what our obligations are to the developer to handle that. So, you'll see those two agreements. And then you'll have eventually, and I'm not sure it'll come with the same time, and this is a developer's choice, which is fine, you'll have a development area, economic impact plan. And the economic impact plan deals with the TIF, the Tax Incremental Financing Structure. So, that'll be developed, it goes to the IDB first, the Industrial Development Board first for them to look at it and approve, and then it comes to the county and to the city for approval. So, that will probably follow in the next few months during their period of time and there is a period of time and I'll let Gary take it away and talk about the periods.
If Mr. Tucker's okay, we hope to send out the contract to you, he will email that out and hopefully, we'll have that contract on the next council meeting. If you are okay with the contract and approve it, then we'll get it signed and then they will deposit $100,000 worth of earnest money. They are asking for a six-month due diligence period, which, after looking at the documents, we do agree with because in that six months of due diligence, they are going to spend about $385,000 to do the economic study, to environmental study, architectural fees. So, they're going to go ahead and start that process and that's in addition to the $100,000 worth earnest money they'll deposit. So, they are, they're ready to spend some money on this, on this process. In the six months, if everything comes back okay in their economic study, then that would determine naturally, the preliminary plan that they gave us had a percentage of business, percentage of residential, parking structure, hotel. In their preliminary studies, the hotel chain actually recommended going up from 80 to 110 rooms, so, that's good news, but they're excited about this, we are too. We're ready to get it moving and like I said, hopefully, it'll be on the next council agenda. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions this time.
Any questions for Mr. Whitaker?
Again, there'll be two, there'll be two, hopefully, two agreements for you to approve next Thursday. One is the sale agreement and the one is the mixed-use development agreement.
Okay.
Adam, how are we writing into the contract, you know, our intent about the sanctuary and is there some type of deed restriction or some type, how do we write?
It's in, it's, I'll be, when I send you the agreements, I'll point you to that section, but it's in the mixed-use development agreement in terms with respect to how that, that particular building is going to be used. There are restrictions in that, it's not in a deed restriction, but it's in the mixed-use See if I can find it here.
I think the anticipation right now is that they will turn it into an entertainment venue or a restaurant as preliminary plans. I think there's some market studies to be done as to what, what they need to do with it, and I think there's also some engineering studies to be done to make sure that it can be done cost-effectively to change it into that type of venue. It does have some unique features in there.
If something changes, I'm just, I want to make sure we have another shot at it. If something changes, that is, the conveyance of the property doesn't give them right to do, to supersede what we had expressed as our intent.
We just need to make sure we've got some language in there at the very least that just says, you're not going to knock it down, I mean, unless we.
We should be able to have some kind of.
Yeah, no, the, the development agreement does protect that property.
And if it's necessary to put something in, in a deed with respect to that, that would basically mirror what is in the mixed-use agreement or the sale agreement, we can, we could look into that as we move towards closing.
And as, and as they show us plans, we'll know exactly what they're doing because they won't be able to do, it's big enough where they, they're going to have to plan for it and let us know how it's going to be worked out. So, we'll see that as we go along during this period of time before they actually close because they won't close on the property until after we see all of their, their plans and their studies.
I got you.
And we, and we, they want to perform a study, have an engineer go and look at the structural integrity of the building, the sanctuary and that too will play in to this as well.
And that's something they're doing.
Absolutely.
That they're paying for.
They're paying for it.
They're paying for that.
Part of, part of their preliminary study and they, we do, we do have in the, one of the documents, might be the purchase agreement, we do have a right of repurchase on that property if they don't begin construction.
That was my other point, was that some kind of performance standards that say, these are going to happen in this kind of timeframe, is it make sure in our contract that there's some kind of standards or timeframe that we've got to guarantee on this so that it doesn't just sit.
Yeah, it's a little bit unusual and they did point it out in our last meeting and I'd have to agree with them, that is, to have a repurchase agreement on something like this is, is a bit unusual, but it's a unique piece of property because it has historical aspect to it, so we didn't want it to, and it is downtown and we didn't want it to sit vacant, not being developed, so the repurchase agreement or the repurchase at the same price is in there at the price of the property, not, you know, the preliminary studies is something that has cost them.
You know, when you get into a contract, sometimes it's hard for us laypeople to decide. I would appreciate you highlighting those particular aspects of it. How are we going to secure the property, sanctuary and then the performance standards? I'd like to see, be able to identify it because reading a legal contract, sometimes I can't.
Well, I'll put, I'll put together a summary for you, but in response to your question with respect to the sanctuary, in the descrip, this is in the mixed-use agreement with the description of the project, there's a subsection, historic redevelopment, it says, "The existing church sanctuary and bell tower will be preserved, reconditioned and put into use as a venue that provides a community amenity, increases employment and produces tax revenues." So, that's, we'll, we'll look into, you know, including that in something in the deed as in addition to the contract.
Were we still talking retail, hotel, condo space? Their original proposal had residential element, which works for fee simple condos, they had the parking structure, the hotel and some mixture of Class A office space and retail. Now, one of the reasons there, I think it's around $50,000 they're spending on this study is to see how much of those that are downtown can sustain and we understand that they gave us the proposal, but some of this stuff will definitely be based upon, there may be a need for more Class A office space, there may be, so, we will have to somewhat be flexible in seeing what that market says. So, we definitely don't want to build something that they can't sell or market and, you know, the retail may be not as much or, and until that market study comes back, one thing I would like to point out they have agreed to is if for some reason it comes back and they don't feel that this is viable, that information is ours. So, we will get the market study, we will get all that information, it'll be ours for if we market the product.
Yeah, I think the important part of that is that, as some of you know, developers have a different risk parameter, different developers have different risk parameters, so that market study may be outside of their parameter and they not want to close, but it'd be valuable information to the next developer. And we've had interest in this from other developers, this piece of property. So, it's possible that if the market study comes back, they don't like it, that another developer would certainly pick it up and go forward with it.
Are we, are we also going to have some, and I'm sorry, I get some of these things confused as far as the timeline and where we have flexibility and where they have flexibility, but, you know, after that comes back, just for example, like, the market study comes back and says it ought to be a factory, you know, then obviously, that's not something that we, you know, that we would think is an appropriate use, although they may say, well, we want to build a factory because we can make some money on it.
No.
We, we still got a chance after that market study comes back going, no, that, we understand what the market study says, but that's not what we want there and.
The uses are defined in the contract.
Uses are defined in the development agreement, the zoning that's on it now is, if I have a better term, pretty much useless, can't develop anything with it. So, they have to go through the rezoning process and so.
So, we still got.
And their market study is not, is not going to be had for general use, it's, the market study is going to be to define how much of the elements that we've talked about is needed in there, although the hotel, I will tell you, the hotel, because they're working with the brand, they know exactly what they're doing and so, you know, that, that's pretty much been covered off pretty well because they're pretty far into discussions with their hotel brands.
There is still probably some need for us to be able, I mean, you know, if they come back and say it needs to be 500-room hotel and 3,000 square feet of commercial space, that's probably not what we all had envisioned either, you know? So, even within the, even within the uses, but that's, that's a lot.
It's defined in the, it's defined in the parameters.
Yeah.
Great.
On generally what is in there. Now, we, we should probably keep in mind some flexibility because we haven't done a market study, so we don't know what the market, and we do want to have something in there that works in the market because the worst thing is a bad development.
Got you. Yeah, I'm good with it.
One thing that's not going to show up in a market study that is a definite need that we, we need, I mean, as a city in our downtown areas, parking. So, I'm not so sure how you're going to reflect in a market study, I mean, the use of the parking for that particular, you know, the hotel and the office space and the performance venue or whatever that sanctuary is, but we have additional needs for parking in our, so I just say, maybe bring that into the mix, you know, to whoever is doing the market study or how, how does this come together because?
We've actually identified that.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Anthony over here some time ago did a parking study, if you will, and we have that information, we know is deficient and one of the things we want to do is add to the parking structure.
Okay.
And part of that TIF is.
Is related to the parking structure.
So, we, now, what we will have to come up with is how much additional do we need and we won't know that until we know the uses because it's all driven from the type of uses. So, once we get that, we can establish a need for the, for the development and then we'll work on how much additional do we need.
Okay.
And that's going to entail a lot more because with the new judicial parking structure and then this one and then the one we have, I mean, they'll, how those are going to work together, so we have a lot to work out. I do want to point out that we did ask them on the six-month due diligence period to give us timelines to keep this going because we didn't want it just set, so, and the information you'll get, they have actually defined what, in the first 30 days, 90 days, what their benchmarks and what they will be accomplishing because we want to get this feedback coming, we just don't want it setting. So, once we sign the contract, we want to know that 90 days into this, they're going to have that market study underway and so, we have asked them for that timeline as well.
One, if we go back to parking for a second, one thing we do have to be cautious of is not to, we can make requirements and we have made requirements and we can make requests to have larger parking, we can't burden the development with too much parking unless we want to pay for it and parking is extremely expensive, so we can't, we, you know, we don't want to go into that anticipation of we're going to take out our entire problem through this development. We have some margin there because we have the TIF to work with, but we, we have to be somewhat cautious and one of the, one of the things with the mixed-use development, one of the advantages of mixed-use development is that you can share some parking in the uses. So, you know, when the commercial vacates at 5:00, 6:00 o'clock and it's empty and retail picks up and restaurant picks up and those kind of things pick up, you have vacant spaces. We required the garage to be open to the public, we didn't set parameters on paid parking because it, they should be able to allow the market to dictate that, but we've said it can't be not accessible to the public, it has to be a public parking garage, understanding certain elements will have requirements like the hotel and the residences, you have to, you're going to have to designate parking for some of that, but there should be quite a bit of parking available in the evenings at least for, the bigger the commercial, the more available parking there will be in the evenings.
But, there will be available public parking in that facility.
Right, it's going to be, it'll be open to the public. I mean, it's someday, we're not there, but someday you may have to pay something to park in there just like you do in any other downtown area, but it can't be exclusively, the development agreement requires it not to be held exclusively only for that development.
Okay, that's good.
Mr. Whitaker, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there any other business?
A couple of weeks ago, when we had the open mic, we had a lot of people come out and they had concerns about Rock Bridge Cove. I had a meeting with the developer on Rock Bridge and just let the council know what we have moved forward and their attorney has sent a letter, I have pushed that all out to you today, just got it today. If you get a chance, take a look at that. I've also sent that letter to Mr. Wayne Dugger who, in the past, has been their representative. I would assume that Mr. Dugger would push that out to all the residents because in the past, he has done that. So, I've communicated with them and the developers have basically stated in that letter that they're going to replace the lights, the decorative lights, build the cover that they had obligated themselves to do and that there is, in that letter, it also talks about three or minus bonds for replacing. bond for replacing any material that needs to be replaced. So if you have any, once you read that, if you have any questions, please feel free to give me, contact me back. I just wanted to let you know that we have had the meeting and moving forward with hopefully resolving the issues out there.
When you say replace material, you're talking about the landscape and is that?
Yes, it is a landscape bond and it was, I think it was actually a joint charity that was put up, if I'm not mistaken from, and again, you had a developer and then you had a builder that actually did the vertical construction, actually, you know, developer provided the pads, contractor came in and built the actual unit. So there's two parties to this thing. So it's, some's responsible for one and the developer's responsible for other items. But I think they've addressed.
Sounds like, reading the letter, that was, it was pretty positive on what the residents had talked to us about and then what they were all working on.
Okay.
Mr. Lance?
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, I just wanted to kind of make a comment. I was approached last night at Sportscom from one of our citizens and just wanted to pass along, I see Chris out there in the, out here behind you, and just wanted to say that Adelaide had come up to me and just really give one of our employees a compliment. His name was James Hill, I believe is in your department. He was there and she was having car troubles. He stayed there with her. He was there just to kind of get, you know, park his city truck and stayed there with her till after dark, helped her get her battery put in her car and just kind of really went above and beyond. And that's the kind of stuff that's really nice to hear every now and again. She asked me to, to make sure I recognized him and I told her I'd do it today. And so there, I've done it. And Chris, I want to pass that along to you, but that is cool, man. You know, sometimes when people walk up to you at Sportscom or wherever you are, you kind of, you're not real sure what they're gonna, you know, talk to you about, right? This was a really good one. So please tell James that we appreciate him and thankful the way he represents the city, okay?
And just update from MED, I talked to PD Mike right before the meeting and the, they've got two crews heading down south. I think they're going to Valdosta tomorrow morning and follow the hurricane up and see if we can help and assist those who are without electricity for the next few days. We'll have some crews down there working. So keep them and their family in prayers.